At ten AM and I will call this meeting to order. And the chair notes, there is a quorum present. Let's do the five seconds. I let the divisions through the flag of the United States of America. And humanly lovely, for which man, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so into additions and revisions to the agenda. Delaney sent out a revised meeting notice earlier this week. On that, I would actually like to pull eight point nine off. And I think we're going to go in a different direction. That so without any objections to that, we would pull that off. Any other additions or revisions?
Don't think we need the additions today.
I think we got a full slate. Okay. And let's move on to correspondence and public comment. Individuals wishing to address the county court may do so at this time. And at other times throughout the meeting, speakers are asked to raise your hand to be recognized by the chair. Give your name and address and limit comments to three minutes. For folks who are dialing in on their phone, it is star six to unmute yourself. If you are on your computer, it's lower left-hand side of your Zoom screen. And then as a reminder, we are pretty informal as we move through the agenda. If there are items that you want to provide input on or ask questions about, please fill through. Any public comments? Okay, um, we, oh, let me go into correspondence. So under correspondence, we have our monthly report from the treasurer's office. For folks who want to see it, it includes the revenue expense report, fund balance summary and bank account balances. Those are part of the court packet, so those are available online if you would like to see them. There is also an outline in here of the cultural trust grants that have been awarded through springtime. And so folks are interested in seeing what's been funded through the cultural trust coalition. It's a different group that helps to fund or helps to decide the grants for those dollars. Miranda helps administer that. Is there another, uh, will it come up again in the fall? In the fall, okay. Um, and then, let's see, next up is a special projects grant, a final report from the Port of Arlington. And then a special projects grant report from the Common Scholarship Foundation. And then one from the Arlington Saddle Club. This is the time of year when all of the folks who received grants from fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three are submitting their final reports before the June thirtieth deadline. So in the case of all of these, they are all available as part of the packet. If you are interested in seeing how the various groups who received competitive grants spent their dollars, what they were used for, that's the place to go. And that's how we provide transparency into that program. And that is a good reminder for those who have not expended their grant funds for any reason. If it's a capital investment or operational, they would like to request an extension to get those in before the June thirtieth deadline, so I can get those scheduled. So reach out directly to Delaney if there's anything funky with your grant that you need to fix. Okay, I think that is all for our correspondence and public comments. We are going to pause for thirty seconds. Before we go into this. Just going to pause for a minute, so I have the script in front of me, so I do don't boggle the hearing. Give me a second.
Just for her.
Yeah. Got it. Okay. So we are going to move into four point zero, which is a public hearing and for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. This is the time duly set and advertised for a public hearing in the matter of the Gillum County Fiscal Year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. Uh, the purpose of the hearing is to receive public comment and respond to questions regarding resolution number R, R twenty twenty-three dash zero seven, adopting the budget, making appropriations and imposing taxes for fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. This is a legislative hearing. All those in attendance that wish to testify are asked to sign the attendance sheet. And if you wish to testify and you're on the Zoom, just please either raise your hand or flag me down. But please make sure to include your name and address when you testify, so we can capture that. And the hearing is now open. And so let's go ahead and start actually with Nathan as the budget officer.
So we, the budget committee completed their work and has submitted and an approved budget. And they had two sessions, all the court members are members of budget committee plus three laypeople. Uh, there was some good discussion, but I think it's pretty cut and dried and straightforward. So unless anybody's getting questions, I'm going to cease to talk.
Go over there. Questions for Nathan?
I have none.
Okay, great. And for, uh, so we'll open it up to public testimony. Is there anybody that wishes in the public to provide testimony on the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget? Again, if you dialed in on your phone, it's star six to unmute yourself. If you're on here on the Zoom platform on your computer, it's a lower left-hand side of your screen. I will just pause for a second in case anybody is trying to unmute. Does not look like it. Okay, if no one wishes to provide a public comment, I will go ahead and close the hearing. And let's move into, um, consider approval of resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash zero seven, adopting the budget, making appropriations and imposing taxes for fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And before we kick in, just probably all of us, uh, need to declare that we all have conflicts. Uh, so I'll go first, that I have a conflict in that, uh, my salary is included as part of the budget. And so do you just want to go next?
I have a conflict as my brother is lead master, my sister-in-law works in corrections and I have a salary also.
You might win.
Most important.
You might. You might win for most conflicts.
And I will also, um, clear a conflict with the sister to barrel and niece. I think that's true.
And yourself.
Yourself.
Okay, so now that we've gotten that out of the way, uh, we still need to vote to pass the budget. Um, and so those conflicts have been noted. Um, yeah.
So we're going to, I move to approve resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash zero seven, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four budget, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes in the amount of eighty-two million fifty-seven thousand and twenty-eight dollars at a tax rate of three point eight four five percent uh, per one thousand of assessed value of all taxable property within Gillum County.
One more second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash zero seven, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes in the amount of eighty-two million fifty-seven thousand twenty-eight dollars and a tax rate of three point eight four five percent per one thousand dollars of assessed value of all taxable property within Gillum County. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
You have the budget book spread.
Yay. Thank you so much, Nathan. That's a heavy lift. Okay. Moving on, stay with us, uh, we'll go into public, uh, hearing. This is for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three supplemental budget. And a separate one, I need to read for that. This is the time duly set and advertised for a public hearing in the matter of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three supplemental budget. This hearing is for the purpose of receiving public comment and responding to questions regarding resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, adopting the supplemental budget and making appropriations for fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. This is a legislative hearing. All those in attendance that wish to testify are asked to sign the attendance sheet. The hearing is now open. Uh, Nathan, if you want to kick us off on.
Basically every year we have a few little adjustments, so this year we only had two. Uh, we had some funds come in from Waste Management that were in excess of what we budgeted. We closed a fund last year, so the amount budgeted was short. So we need to increase appropriations, we can make a transfer into the other fund. Uh, the second one is Community Counseling Solutions. It's just, we're a pastor for that entity. And you know, I think Commissioner Watkins has had her experience dealing with the state and the Oregon Health Authority and understands why this is ever, I mean, I guess say every year, but a lot of years, there's an adjustment. This one's pretty big because just what it ended up being, I think they're still passing some COVID funds through to us as of last, you know, July, August timeframe. So that's my only comments unless anybody has any questions, I mean, real straightforward, cut and dry.
So it's the best guess and sometimes we're all.
Right, yeah, the estimates wrong sometimes, in this case quite a bit, but I'm hoping, you know, I'm always hopeful every year that we won't. We didn't have any last year, so we, we won last year, but this year we did not.
Definitely have some next year.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But we're trying to restore us.
Yeah, any questions for Nathan? If not, we'll move into public testimony. So again, uh, for folks who have dialed in on their phone, it is star six to unmute yourself. If you're on the Zoom, it's lower left-hand side of your screen. Um, is there anybody that wishes to provide a public comment or testimony on the supplemental for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three? Just giving it a minute, just in case most of the folks on are county employees. So, okay. Um, if not, I will go ahead and close, uh, the hearing. And then we will move into directly into consider approval of resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, adopting a supplemental budget and making appropriations for fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Um, I move to approve resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, adopting a supplemental budget and making appropriations for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, adopting a supplemental budget and making appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three as presented. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thanks Nathan.
Very updated.
All right, moving right ahead, uh, into six point zero, which is the consent agenda. Question about it.
I will just say that it's a fairly healthy consent agenda one more time, but I'm good with everything that's in it.
Will we note it? Do I have a motion on it?
Yep, I move to approve the consent agenda.
One more second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the consent agenda, which consists of consider approval of May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes. Consider approval of June bills and review. Consider approval of amendment number one to agreement number one, seven six four four five with OHA for environmental health services. Consider approval of amendment number two to intergovernmental agreement with Port of Arlington for Willow Creek Project IGA restructuring. Consider approval of amendment number one to intergovernmental agreement with South Gillum County Health District for Public Health Services. And consider approval of letter of support for Gillum County Local Public Safety Coordinating Council Lipstick Justice Reinvestment Grant Proposal. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Moving right along into unfinished business, the seven point one, which is our regular update from Kimberly on what's happening with Community Counseling Solutions. Good morning. See, you made it right on time, Kimberly. We had a heavy agenda before.
It sounds, it sounds like a big consent agenda.
Yeah.
The winter is, uh, snow and ice and then on the summer it's construction and I just should know better. All right, so first item, there is our newsletter. I'd just like to get that out, so you can see what, um, what's been going on internally and externally at CCS. On the front page of this, me driving a tractor. Been doing lots of things for the first time, so had to figure out how to use my husband's tractor and, um, cut, cut a huge field of grass and move hay and lots of fun stuff. So I won't go through every page of this newsletter with you, but, um, nice document. And then, um, the next document, we do this every quarter, so most of the time when I'm here, you're getting an updated document. It is the survey that, um, our customers are given the last two weeks of every quarter to get their input on five different areas for how we're doing. And you see that Gillum County is on page three. This is both addictions and mental health. There were about twenty-five, twenty-three to twenty-five responses, which is good. Again, it's a voluntary survey. Generally, I think that those that are really happy or those that are really upset respond to voluntary surveys. So, um, I, you know, it looks good, doesn't mean that we're perfect, because we're not, but that's encouraging. You can see, uh, the agency combined surveys and then, um, specific county. Comments for Gillum County are on the back. Two shout-outs to Damon. That is great. Damon is very well-liked. Any questions or comments on the newsletter or the customer feedback?
If folks are interested in receiving your newsletter, how would they go about sending it for?
Um, I can just add you to our mailing list. It's, again, it's just internal. Uh, I mean, that doesn't mean that I wouldn't send it out. All of the employees get it. Um, but I'll ask Christie to put you on there.
Okay.
Okay, yep. It's, um, it's good. The, um, other big news for Gillum County or Condon and CCS is that we are purchased, we, well, we hope to purchase, let me back up, we have yet to make an offer, but we will be soon on the building that is adjacent to the DHS building in Condon. So it's, uh, attached, attached and looks to me like it shares a wall. We are out of space. Um, it's great to, to be co-located with, um, the health center, um, primary care office, but we just need more space. And so we will be making an offer on that building and. I believe so. That's insurance, right?
Yeah.
Um.
What about housing?
Well, that's on here too. We had to, the state, the state requested that a lot of the entities pause. Um, CCS was one, not just because of the dollar amount that we received. They couldn't keep up with all of the contracts for the housing. Um, and they also, and we sent in our quarterly reports. The long and short of it is they were just backlogged. So they said that we can begin again. Last three months we've been paused. And so we will now be picking up the work again of looking for housing in, um, Gillum, Wheeler, Morrow and Grant. And so no update, we haven't purchased anything. Again, we have funds set aside and that were, were approved for purchasing, um, something in Condon and something in Arlington, seven hundred and fifty thousand total for Gillum County. And we were just going to roughly split it. We know of anything. There, there has been, um, a duplex and I think Commissioner Shannon, you and I talked about it.
It's still about it.
I'm hoping.
And there's also another piece of property I will reach out to about and check on. I don't know if it's on the market, but it might be able to.
It could work and maybe put like modular. Oh, it does sound. Okay. All right. I think I shared with you last time that Mary Helen Peterson had given her, um, put in her retirement notice. And that's very painful for all of CCS, because she's been with us for a long time and has done an amazing job. We are, um, advertising for her position. She has, uh, without much cajoling, agreed to stay on until, um, we fill her position, albeit in a modified manner, so she's not going to work full-time, but we're very grateful for that. She is looking forward to walking the Camino, something.
Over to Spain?
Yes, yeah. So she's, she wanted to have done all of it, or for sure she's done parts of it before. So well, anyways, that's one thing on her bucket list and we're very excited for her to do, but are, are recruiting for another local supervisor. The Arlington position, we've been advertising that now for a year and, you know, still no interest. We continue to advertise. We do think that the position would be best, it would be best for the position if the person was on site. Um, the gal that left the position and returned to Southern California, um, has been, has stayed on as an employee, but just doing it virtual. And so that's great. Um, and the people that she sees love her. In fact, she might have gotten it, uh, no, it was last month that she got some feedback. And that is, um, gosh darn it, her name just left me. She was dating one of the, anyway, former court manager. Yeah, or they were. That's, yeah, Malaney or.
Yeah.
Is it Malaney? Anyways, uh, very well-liked. There are some folks that would advocate that that becomes a remote position, because she is willing to work full-time. And there's a lot of upside to that, tremendous upside. She loves working for CCS. But, um, it does put a little bit more pressure upon the existing staff, because she's not able to participate in the crisis call rotation, so they're picking up more. And then, um, you know, and some folks just benefit from being seen in person. So we're just trying to balance that. I hate to lose her. I don't know. At some point you ask yourself, when do you just throw in the towel and? But then when it's filled, it's filled and, and.
The wall.
And, right, so closely tied to that is access. Um, people are getting in relatively well and timely in Gillum County. It's generally a week or two, but if somebody has a crisis, they're being seen immediately and getting in for a screening, so that's good. That's not the same in all the counties that we work in. Um, however, that is somewhat because Mary Helen has been picking up some of the overflow and backfilling. So just slightly nervous about that when she reduces her hours um, until we get her position filled. So I'm always very candid about stuff, uh, hopeful that that will, that will work out. And, and that access and hiring are closely tied together. Any questions on Mary Helen's position, Arlington's position, access or positions? Okay. We are continuing to move forward with, um, the acute care facility in Hermiston. We used to have the one in John Day. We closed that. I think I went over the details of why that closes, because the Hermiston went open, but then that wasn't, uh, that, that didn't work out well. For the company that was managing it, we since have came into possession of it. Um, it'll be great for Eastern Oregon for Morrow, Gillum, Wheeler and Grant and Umatilla, because we'll once again have acute care on the side of the state right now. Everybody's getting shipped over to the west side. And kids program continues to kind of two steps forward, one step back in program in, uh, in Boardman. Again, there are no subacute facilities for kids on the east side of the state.
So when you're talking acute care, it's really about community restoration or is that all in the line?
Well, that is, the community restoration term is a very specific term for people who are, um, found guilty of a crime due to a mental health issue or actually, let me back up. Uh, people who are unable to stand trial because of a mental health issue and they need to be restored, uh, so that they can. So it's not, um, necessarily a mental health issue, because they're not generally enrolled in services, but.
So what qualifies them for acute care?
Acute care is people who have a mental health issue. So depression, psychotic, delusional, and they need to go to a psychiatric acute care hospital.
So in your, um, you know, this salmon run facility, is that just, what is that in words?
That isn't Pendleton. It is for people who are, um, found guilty of a crime due to a mental health issue and they are put under the, um, so their parole is the psychiatric security review board. And the PSRB, um, places them in facilities. And Salmon Run is a PSRB exclusive facility for people who were at the state hospital guilty of a crime due to a significant mental health issue. It's usually like a felony. Well, community restoration is for people who have not went to trial. Yeah, it's, it's the front end of it. And that's, it's a very hot topic right now. Aid and assist, that's what, that's what that falls under. No room to get that, uh, they're supposed to go to the state hospital to get the evaluation and. Uh, they're supposed to go to the state hospital to get the evaluation and receive the, um. Information to restore them, cause it's can't, it's not treatment, you can't treat people. As you don't know if they have a mental health issue at that point, it's on the front end of the system. Uh, so it's called restoration, so that you'll understand what the court process is. Anyways, it's detailed and nuanced and it's highly controversial and, um. There is no funding for it and. So, and insurance, our insurance doesn't wanna pay for it because it's not treatment. But the state has asked the mental health programs to do it, but the state acknowledges that we have no insurance to do it. So I do, you, it, most of the time Gillum County doesn't have. Anyone, but there is one person that I believe, now I saw in the report last week. In Gillum County that is fitting the criteria. Um, I think they're in jail now, I, I, I. I don't wanna confuse it, I think they're in jail, I think they're supposed to go to the state hospital to get the assessment. State hospital is saying happy to do it when we can get them in, which is beyond the ninety days. Which is a Mossman order, that they can't be there for ninety days and so it just, so our team is working closely with. The DA on, um. How to get the evaluation and what to do for the restoration piece. And then when they get restored, then they can go to trial, sometimes they are. Found guilty but not due to a mental health issue, they're not guilty, um. But they may have a mental health issue, there, there's four quadrants and, um, it's about fifty fifty what direction they go. When they're able to understand what it means to participate in a trial.
More questions for Kimberly?
Probably like, why did I say that?
I'm upset about how this is playing out.
I would, uh, uh, did you see the news this morning about, um, Clackamas County? Is trying to get a measure on November ballot?
On this aid and assist stuff?
No. To, um, turn back measure one ten.
Um, would you like my opinion on that?
No, well, you could give it to us a couple times, I know where you lie, I just, I just think it's something that, um. Everybody that has the concerns that you've shared with us, that I have. I'd be on board on how to support Clackamas County in that effort.
Well, you, you can sign on and it was my understanding that Clackamas, I was CC'd and, and I didn't, so I, I, I was BCC. So I couldn't tell who all was included, but, um. How Clackamas County filed, they. Counties could sign up, but not nonprofits, but I understood that it went out to county councils. And the counties were given the opportunity to put their logo. So I will, um.
The only thing I saw is when I heard the news today, cause I've never heard anything about it before. Say Clackamas County, we have these meeting today to decide where to go with that.
I'll see if I can find that. You can support them, right? And if you have their county. Yeah. And they, and I would love it if any, if you supported it.
So are they? Clackamas County Board of Commissioners is putting. About measure on to opt out of one ten?
To reverse. To reverse measure one ten and it, and it indicated that one oh nine will probably fall.
Interesting.
In that also, which is probably where it'll run into some resistance, cause there are a lot of. Westside support for magic lessons and the therapy that goes with it. And I think that'll be, but I think that, I mean, listen to the, the great problem we got going on, everybody's. It'll, it's. Something that could get some movement.
Yeah, um, I don't know all the specifics with Clackamas County, but they are finding that. Um, so of course their parole numbers, parole probation numbers have went down, because there's fewer convictions, their municipal, municipal court numbers have. Went through the roof, because there's more trespassing property, you know, and just, uh. Loitering, littering, that kinda stuff.
There's also an issue through Clackamas County, if I understand it right. What to do with the bodies, cause they're taking care of a lot of the bodies for around the state. As far as. And they're, they're maxed out, and they're not gonna be able to do that anymore, they can't even keep up with what's going on in the moment of a county.
Your medical examiner, people I think is whatever.
Pretty, um, pretty crazy, there was in Umatilla County, a fifteen year old who, um. Whose friend gave her a. She said she had a headache and her friend gave her an ibuprofen. And she took the ibuprofen and ended up in the ER. Um, being revived by, um. The, um, oh my gosh, can't believe, but anyways, the antidote for fentanyl. Narcan, yeah, and, um. The friend felt horrible, the friend's brother is a dealer. And fentanyl and ibuprofen, um, is a good cut and cheaper. And it, um, sometimes you have headaches when you come off of fentanyl, so if you cut it with the ibuprofen, then. It makes the headache not be there or go away, kind of thing, so this girl thought she was giving her friend. Ibuprofen, she didn't know that, um, she gave her ibuprofen plus fentanyl. And the girl, um, nearly died on it, but had no intention of taking fentanyl, she just. Had a headache. You know, not, this is not a drug use thing at all, so, um. Very concerning. I mean, it is a drug use thing, but in her case, it's not a. This isn't about an addiction, this is, that's just about fentanyl being everywhere and. Very concerning.
Yeah, if you could get that.
I'll see if I can find that email, my struggle is gonna be who sent it to me, we moved to a new email system and the search function is. I feel like I need to take some Benadryl before I. Enter into the search function, so that's my, if I know the name of the person, I'm, I'm good, but I don't know that. I'll see what I can do.
Any other questions for Kimberly?
Thanks for letting me.
Everything that you guys are doing.
We appreciate getting to work with you and, um, and so next time, I hope you all have a great summer.
Yeah, me too. All right, um, let's move in, uh, Delaney's gonna also see if we can track down through our Clackamas County friends. Uh, more information on whether to, so maybe try, I'm not sure either. Um, okay, let's move on to seven point two, which is city county insurance services fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four insurance proposal, John. Good morning.
Trying to get her to tell a happy story before she.
Next time we'll put you before. Overdose on fentanyl, yeah.
Okay, did you get everybody a packet? So, um. I've sent out the renewal information to all department heads and they have reviewed the auto and equipment and property schedules for their respective departments. Filtered that back through Delaney, uh, we've met, um, we updated. Um, and now we've got our proposal back, so, um, we knew our rates going into this prior to our initial meetings, um, they're not great. Uh, auto and general liability at nine percent, uh, property and auto physical damage at twenty-three percent. Um, nothing to do in particular with Gillum County, those rates were passed down to everybody in the pool with CIS, so. Um, without getting into the weeds too much, um. You know, the, the first page is the proposal summary, um, we would need you guys to, uh, agree to it. Um, and have the judge sign off on each line of coverage, uh, send back to me, I get that to CIS. And coverage will begin seven one. Uh, also included, uh, in this packet. Is some information on claims, uh, towards the back, if you guys want to head in that direction. Overall, five year loss history is sixteen percent, right, so that's every line of coverage that we have, liability property. Um, cyber, so on and so forth, not seeing any claims there, right, uh, the county. Road Department shop dropped off last year, right, so that was our last major, uh, property claim. Um, so overall, things look good, uh, to point out, one, uh, obviously, our, our auto is, is a ninety-seven percent loss ratio. So, um, and one claim within that is still open with damages owed. Uh, and likely to be paid to the claimant, um, so we're gonna be over a hundred percent. For this last year. So we are, we are over for this year, but on the five year, we're gonna be over a hundred percent, so. Additional information on that, um. To help, you know, if there's any changes that you wanna consider, um. Is two pages further, where it gives you a breakdown of, of which departments are. Giving the claims and then, there's some nice information here if you wanna dive deeper, but. Um, you know, we've had good years, we've had bad years, and this should be expected when you have a fleet to the, the size of Gillum County, it's right, we've got. Fifty cars on the road and some of them are gonna get banged up from time to time, so it's, we'll see in the five year, you know, obviously, but, uh, as far as rates go, it's because. The frequency of, of claims for everybody is going up and the cost of those claims is going up dramatically. Um, you know, you hit a pheasant with your pickup, it's unibody frames and everything, it's gonna cost you three thousand dollars anymore, they used to slap a little Bondo on there. And you got your Alphador for a couple hundred bucks, but, um, that's all changed. With that, um, CIS has come back to us this year, um. They're going to change the fleet's deductible, so no longer gonna allow Gillum County to have, uh, currently the fleet is covered at two hundred and fifty dollars comprehensive. Five hundred dollars collision, uh, they're increasing that. Uh, to five hundred comprehensive and a thousand collision moving forward seven one, so currently that's, that hasn't changed, but it will reflect seven one.
So on this, on this form where children department.
Sure. Oh, that's nothing, it's just a different.
Total, so it's, one is the number of claims and the other one is how much those claims cost.
So fingers crossed next year will be a good year.
I'm also curious to see in our public transportation side as we shift more and more to paid drivers, if that has. Any impact, um, just because I think we're, we're gonna hopefully be able to be. More consistent about getting employees trained and there's different accountability measures, I mean, if you were. Just kind of at the beginning of having more paid drivers, I'm hopeful that maybe at least on the public transportation side, that we see those numbers start to come down.
Sure, both under you, you know.
I, I would think that if we see those numbers continue to trend up, CIS is gonna send a swarm of first management people out here to. To circle. Um, but as of now, I haven't heard that that's the case, but I would just, I've seen it before and I would assume that that's, you know.
Last year.
We did, yeah, but they would be targeting the other things, but. As of now, that's not on the table, but I just predict that we could.
So the, it's done, we budget by department, so each department budgeted, I've had them budget, I believe, a twenty to twenty-five percent increase overall. So we should have, yeah.
Yeah, and the adjustments that we made were pretty minor. To be expected, you know, bidding the equipment schedules and vehicles, moving things from department, the transfer.
As the sheriff's department adds new vehicles on and stuff like that, like their costs will go up, so we might have to look at the supplemental for that next year, but.
Yeah, um, the only other thing to note on my end, um, you know, we still have the, or the, um, cyber stuff that we dealt with last year, um, that automatically renewed. Um, they didn't ask us for more additional information, it was kind of a lengthy process last year, but now we're, we're in and I hope to see that continue without having to. Reinvent the wheel every year, but who knows?
After what happened in, uh, Curtin County, Delaney has been working with Redcom to really. Yeah, there's gonna be, I think, a lot more security measures in place and being more thoughtful about how the network's set up and.
July fifth will have a big proposal for some changes.
Our company is targeted all the time, we get, we get phishing scams weekly almost now, and we have very. Secure measures that we take, but we're still targeted, I mean, it's, it's really on the rise. So, but you guys are in good shape as far as what you have in place now, um, you know, to implement this, we had to take some. Procedural measures, which we did last year, which have carried over, so good shape there.
Questions, um, for John?
And, you know, outside of this, because of the way it's structured with CIS, I come and present, so that we can sign off on it, the other lines of insurance aren't that way, but, you know, we do have other policies. Um, the railroad liability that we have for shutter flat and, uh, safe work compensation, but those are all pretty much, uh. Rinse and repeat.
Yeah. Questions? Second, we moved down second and that we approved the proposal from CIS for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four insurance coverage as presented, is a further discussion. All those in favor? And I, any opposed, motion? All right, we can sign to.
Any of you feel free to call me anytime with any questions.
All right, um. Let's go into new business, eight point one is considered a group of resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash zero nine, a resolution redesignating the Gillum County. Enterprise Zone, Delaney, yes, this has been Delaney's baby, so why don't you take it from here? And tell us kinda where we are and what you need to move forward.
So we are heading into the final stages of getting the Gillum County Enterprise Zone red designated. Um, though I am working on the application piece of it, but in order to submit the application, we need to have all of the. Sponsors and consenting agencies, um, renew their enterprise zone resolutions. Um, today we are doing ours and then the city of Arlington and the city of Condon have theirs on their agendas for tonight, and then the part of Arlington has theirs on for tomorrow. Uh, it's just, we adjusted the zone a little bit and we, and we discussed that at our enterprise zone meeting that we had. Um, at the end of last month, and but other than that, there's really no major changes to any of the zone.
This is as a reminder, specifically called out in the strategic plan, uh, as a goal, to get it red designated. And, um.
Yeah, it hasn't been utilized in a while, but we're hopeful that there might be some projects eventually that will come in to utilize it.
Same needs to be there.
Yes, any questions for Delaney? Any questions from the public before we move forward? Okay, do we have a motion?
Resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash oh nine is presented.
Hi, second. The moved and second that, that we approved resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash zero nine as presented, so for their discussion. All those in favor? I, any opposed, motion carries, okay, eight point two. I any opposed, motion carries, okay, eight point two is consider award of fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four cycle one. Capital investment grants, um in your packet, we actually combined eight point two and eight point three. Eight point three being consider award of this year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four special projects grants. So maybe we can talk about them together and I think we'll, assuming we wanna move forward, have two separate motions, do you wanna walk it through?
Absolutely, so we will start off with, we had for the first cycle of capital investment grants. We had three applications, one from Arlington Child Care Center to do some improvements to their current building. That are required by the state in order for them to keep their operations going. Um second, we have the Arlington School District with an application to for housing for staff, they're looking to build two houses. In Arlington for their staff to be able to utilize, and then the third one was from Condon School District. Uh it is a paving project that is necessary due to them being um able to use the. Or having Condon Early Learning Center be able to use their parking lots for their staff. In order to help get the expansion project through.
So they have an agreement in place in order to meet the city's planning requirements for the expansion. We need to have off-site perking and there is none on this early learning centers once we create the expansion, and so the school district. And um the church in that neighborhood have both agreed to allow the early learning center staff to park in. Um so for the school district, it would be the lot above the pool.
The Seventh Day Adventist Church is behind.
Okay.
Um so that's why it's coming in under an early ed, um is because it's directly connected to the expansion project. Anybody have any question?
I have a question from the representatives of the Arlington School District. So on the uh. Power issue going to the property, because these are to be built on that on that property, right?
One of them is.
What what is? Where is the school district with that issue of the power that goes through that to the property?
I'm glad you asked that question, because I've got the answer.
So what we're mentioning at is roughly a two-acre parcel. We can set the first house in there and not have that power line interfere with this. In place of strategic strategically, so it doesn't mess up continuing adding into that two-acre parcel. And talking with the port and their plans on the ground that is just south of it. Everybody's in agreeance that that power line has got to go because it's goes right through the middle of their of their project. And the plan of it now is to extend the power when they come into their subdivision. To be able to get power out of the existing Columbia view to basically power what is now Tom and Mance's. House.
Wonder if it's a compassion there, if you check into that?
That I don't know, the only other option, which is Plan B, which isn't gonna do. I mean, it's, the port is gonna wind up having to move power other is to.
Well, I would, I I guess I would assume that when that went in, that the power company just didn't put that in without an easement somewhere.
We cannot find any trace of any easement anywhere, and the power company right now at the first round of debate is saying, well. Power line's been in the ground for twenty years, so it is what it is. If you wanna move it, you.
I mean, I almost think it's not a court issue, it's a power company issue.
It's a cross between the power company and the existing contractors, and I believe that it is.
But they would, they wouldn't actually own anything until the meat.
And that power going up the hill is. Full voltage, there's no transformers on the whole where it comes down and goes into our property transformer. Is it Tom and Mance's on there right at the base of their house?
So I would say that's a power.
So Jed's on and I see as as uh images of Jed, do you, do you wanna add to that anything about status of the power?
Yeah, I appreciate meeting with the school.
Uh you look like you're muted, maybe.
Says I'm unmuted, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate meeting with the school and identifying that issue. In addition, we have met since then with specific power and working toward a solution that. Will uh eventually be along a property line rather than diagonally through the school's property. Uh that could involve adding some more capacity because that line right now just serves one house. And shop, and in the future, it would involve serving a whole subdivision, so. We're, we're aware of that problem, uh appreciate the school being able to build on the, you know, just the one house for now. And gives us buys us some time to get a good solution and eventually allow the school to build that other. Uh house, place the other house there as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions on these three? Um Delaney, do you wanna walk through special projects?
For special projects grant. Um I'll start with the north special projects grants, we received two that are from the north, and that is from the Arlington Zaddle Club. For a capital project to um work on their arena fencing. And then the second one is from the Port of Arlington with another capital project for walkway paving. And then we have the middle pool, which is our north and south, and this is determined by if they're an agency that serves. Uh both ends or location based, but for the capital project for the Port of Arlington, it fell under the north. Um because they are, that's where that location is. Um the historical society one could have also gone under the south, but it just Sherry and I left it under the middle one for that. For the small amount that it is. Um we have the International Club is asking for seventy-five hundred dollars for to cover their fundraising costs for the various fundraisers that they do. Then the Gillum County Historical Society needs some additional funds to upgrade their security on their doors. As well as do some preservation of the projects that were funded last year. Um and those costs are divided, half of that comes from the north pool of funding and half of it comes from the south pool of funding. And then for special project grant applications for the south, we have the city of Condon is coming in under a community innovation. Grant, which is a new category that we added this year for projects that really aren't events and aren't capital projects. Um for some community vision, visioning funding. We have Condon Early Learning Center with an event application for their tuition for TOTS fundraiser. Condon Scholarship Foundation with an event for their Condon Scholarship Foundation Dinner and Auction that they do annually. Uh this is the one that there was a note that the committee recommends fully funding the grant request with a stipulation that auction items will no longer be funded. In future grants, last year, the stipulation was that live auction items couldn't be requested, so this year, they're. Asking for silent auction items to be funded through the grant, and so the committee is funding, recommending funding it this year that way, but next year not allow. Auction items to be purchased with current funding from the county. Next, we have a Condon School District. Next, we have Condon School District with a capital project for gym improvements, this is to upgrade the scoreboard system. Due to O S A A um adding in the shop clock regulations, and this will be done in the high school gym. And then they're asking Condon School District and also looking for funds for their tumbleweed tournament event. And then we have South Gillum County Health District coming in with a community innovation project for program improvements. This one, they are looking to um upgrade to a new billing system that will allow more patient portal access and some other really cool things. But they need to have both programs, their current system and the new one running at the same time, so they're asking for some funds to help offset the cost of having to run both programs. And then the last one is Summit Springs Village, um and with a capital project for yard improvements to the both locations.
So the recommendation is to fully fund all of the requests with the one stipulation for the Condon Scholarship Foundation. And then you'll see on here as well, the fund balances, there's sufficient to fully fund everybody, and it looks potentially like we'll. Be able to probably do a fall cycle uh for sure for the north and even possibly for the south again.
The reason and the disparity in the available funding is that these grants are done on a rolling basis, so every year, the percentage of the host fee is added to it. And so uh the north fund just has more availability because that grant pool has not been utilized as much as this whole thing.
So folks from the north, thinking about this fall, smaller projects that might fit this, because.
Capital project is a thirty thousand dollar limit, community innovation is a twenty thousand dollar limit, and then events are seventy-five hundred dollar limit.
Questions about any of these, any concerns or modifications we wanna make to the recommendations?
So Catherine, can you elaborate on the city of Condon's form?
Yeah, so uh uh two years ago, we had a new counselor and he asked about what is Condon. Both of them did, and instead of purely just going through the articles and priorities. It's a very good question, so when the Ford family and the Meyer Memorial Trust and all of the funders came through. Um or your, oh, right? Um they brought up that they'd envision uh projects for uh city of Adrian and some of the other cities. So when I met with the finance committee about some weeks ago, I said, you know, the project's coming up. Wouldn't you think, and so it's gonna go to the council tonight, it's not a hundred percent approved, the finance committee said go for it, which the counselor that was. That had the question to go for it, so Ford family requested that we go to um. Get other funds first, and also to the R D I Rural Development Initiative could do the project, so they gave us a quote, that's what we got. We can pare down if we need to, but I'm also in conversations with Caitlin because she saw that we were doing the visioning and she also thinks that we need to get. The other part of the money probably from the Ford family, I was under the impression of the Ford family foundation. To go for this first part, we'll help you with it continuing, and so we went, we'll work with them and see what it is. And it's basically to give us a plan for twenty-five years, of what's gonna go, and nothing to disparage me or my counselors. But we're all to the point of, we need to have a vision to help the next group that comes in. Go forward, and and it will be something that's looked at and hopefully when we have a retreat, but this is also too. One thing I did wanted to do is to be a really long process and lose people, kind of like what we did with the housing, I felt. When we did the origin solutions, we had people drop off that it's too long, and this one is about the.
About what?
About an eight-month process.
Is this also something, I think, when this first came up, it was in context of the Arts and Culture District that we're still kicking around? Um is that gonna be a component of that too?
I think everything will be. Everything in common, so it would be, and I also foresee it, when we talk to the Ford family, they suggested that we. Go countywide or at least with our friends to the south, but we figured to start with, just to give it. I foresee it since there's, I live in rural, that it would be South County and on. At this point, and if maybe once we get into the vision session, it might be something that we open up, and I don't want it to turn in like some of the others that I have been. Specifically the houses, it was a countywide and it was great, except it was too long and dropped off a lot of people. So um I think we wanna keep it somewhat smaller so we can get it done.
It honestly seems like um. If we wanted to do something similar in Arlington, which I would welcome that if the city in Arlington wants to take this on. Um but it seems like if both cities end up doing their own visioning, then. At some point, I think, once they both have documents and you can see where there's crossover and where each in community has identified crossover, that's a natural thing, but it. There's, I mean, they are different communities, um and I think sometimes like it's important that the communities get to have their. Identity kind of stamped into their vision.
And I think too with some of the potential businesses that might be coming specifically in the London, they are going to be a lot different.
Right.
And I, when you ask about Condon Arts, of course, they're gonna be involved, the chief is gonna be involved, the county's gonna be involved. Every entity, I'm hoping that will participate in this, so we can see all of what the services and. What do they want Condon, exactly, how it'll look like.
Great.
Thank you.
Other questions on the applications, the recommendations from the review committee? Are you guys ready to proceed? Okay, if so, we're at two separate motions, one on the capital investment and then one on the special projects recommendations.
I move to approve the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, twenty twenty-four cycle one capital investment grants. As presented and to authorize the county judge to finalize and execute grant agreements reflecting the same.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four sample one capital investment grants as presented. To authorize the county judge to finalize and execute grant agreements reflecting the same, so further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
I any opposed, motion carries, and then a second motion on the special projects.
I move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four special projects grant awards. And conditions as presented and to authorize county judge to finalize and execute grant agreements reflecting the same.
Sure.
So moved and seconded that we approved the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four special projects grant awards and conditions as presented. To authorize the county judge to finalize and execute grant agreements reflecting the same, is there further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
I any opposed, motion carries. Eight point four is consider approval of modification to Condon Early Learning Center fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty. Uh twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three capital investment grant agreement, Delaney, do you wanna outline this?
Yes.
We'll get a grant agreement over to you guys shortly.
Uh so uh I have been working with Janine Convoy and Haley Potter with Condon Early Learning Center to get. Their um capital investment grants that they received in the fall cycle. Um extended and modified, um some of their projects have changed slightly, and of course, as with everything these days, it is taking longer than expected. To get the materials for for their project, um so we are asking that the grit overall be extended. Through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, um and then as well as the project modification. Um instead of replacing the roof on the large storage shed, they would just like to patch it. Um the storage shed will eventually have to be moved or sold once the expansion project is done. So instead of fully replacing the roof, they would just like to patch it to get them through the timeline of the expansion. Um and then they were able to select a different shade system for the infant play area that will cost less than the original system. With the savings of both of those projects, they would like to be able to purchase a new toy storage shed for the toddler play area. As the current shed does not have doors on it, and has not for a period of time. Um and this shed will be able to stay after the expansion is completed.
Is October thirty-first sufficient?
They say that they should have their play equipment sometime like end of July, like August, so I'm assuming it is, and if not, we can. Set it for there, but I asked them if they thought like a mid-fall deadline would be okay, and they were okay, yeah, okay.
Any questions, concerns?
I move to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three capital investment grant Condon Early Learning Center. By authorizing the grant fund use for storage shed roof patching in the purchase of a new toy storage shed. By extending the grant deadline to October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three and offer a standard prepare and execute. Mentioned grant agreement reflect, reflection same.
Second, if anybody wonders why we have suggested motion language, that is why. Uh okay, so it is been moved and seconded that we amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three capital investment grant of Condon Early Learning Center. By authorizing the grant fund's use for storage shed roof patching and the purchase of a new toy storage shed and by extending the grant. patching and the purchase of a new toy storage shed and by extending the grant deadline to October thirty first, twenty twenty three and to authorize the county judge to prepare and execute an amended grant agreement reflecting the same. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's move on to eight point five, discussion on Columbia Hills Manor Board Recruitment. Kat, do you want to kick us off on this one?
Yeah, um. Tia called me a while back and said that, I mean, two, three weeks ago, I guess, and said that the current board for Columbia Manor, which is um a nonprofit five oh one C three is looking to retire from their position at board and looking for some suggestions on where to go with that. And it, we've had a couple of discussions around and have some ideas and I think that um, you want me to kind of lay it out or do you want to? I mean, one thing we were talking about is like who would want to do this to start with? And why would they want to do it? And um, in fact, Tia and I talked yesterday and one thing that I was saying is how would you, how could this help us with the with housing throughout the county and um looking at from a county perspective and um, I'm wondering about, and I haven't read the bylaws, but making a change to the bylaws and the board structure that would maybe set up a board with a county court member and a court member members from each of the cities and a couple at large members on it to um see if we could move housing forward within Gillon County as a joint effort with all the concerned entities and partners that were trying to do that anyway. There's a way that entity could be utilized or help us get there. There are some things about, and I don't know all the details, we were talking about some of them, there's some uh property with Columbia Manor that um would probably take some work to pull out from under the existing grant. Your grant requirements through both the state and the feds, I understand. Is that a joint requirement?
The consolidated funding um cycle is what they call it. And so in order to fund the full project, we had federal funds, state funds, and then the Oregon Housing, um Oregon Affordable Tax Credits uh Grant given to us also, which is um a fundraising cooperation or a program in cooperation with a local banking institution. We have it happening. There's three funding sources.
And in regards to Columbia Manor, she's um communicated that it is sustainable at this point and have some funding for an emergency if it comes up and available. And it's not like it's in a situation that's losing money every month.
Mm-hmm.
But it's tight. And um, we've talked a little bit about the requirements to live there. And there are some um, requirements, minimum and maximum income requirements and age requirement. So all that. But I think potentially with where Oregon is today, what you want to do with housing, maybe get some help out of Seattle or trying to make things fit a little better or whole objective just on that portion already exists.
So are they, um, so with the original project, was that all grants or those loans that are being?
So the Oregon Affordable Housing Tax Credit Program is a loan. Um, and in in effect, they made us take it because the project could afford it. There's a hundred thousand dollars total out of the two point permanent dollar project. It's a a one point one percent interest rate. So we just real men pay what we have to pay. It's since important thousand right now. So other than that, it's completely paid for. Beyond that, though, there's just the obligation to maintain the affordability credentials with it. So there's obligations, even though you have, don't have to pay back them.
Got it. And then like, um, so as an example, the grain lab that we have is under, we have those grain uh obligations, but they expire a certain period. Is that the case with this facility?
Two thousand and fourteen.
Yeah, it's ten years out. Twenty year obligation to half point is weird.
Okay. I just, just to add to what Pat said, um, you know, it, the board is myself and Nancy Proctor and Jeff Wilkins. I moved to Arlington in two thousand and fourteen and have still been, you know, doing it. Um, Nancy, obviously, as you guys know, is getting ready to properly move to Arlington. And Jeff just does it out of the goodness of his heart because he won't abandon us. And so it's just, it's time for us to kind of move on, but but I would love to see it is, it's a well-respected, you know, five oh one C three. Um, there's about eight million dollars in gross grant projects written through that, um, through the five oh one C three, which, you know, in the five oh one C three world is kind of, you know, it speaks to what your success is, is, you know, the money you brought through. Um, and I just in thinking about the county's vision right now and and um focus on housing, I just, I had approached Pat and said, you know, this might be a real good opportunity for for there to be a five oh one C three and a community that potentially could help. In order for this group, this, for this group to to be successful, there there just needs to be more new things and more projects. And um, that's not something our current group is willing to take on. We have sustained it and we've done well. And it's all, you know, if we're not getting out to some things, you know, in trouble, the money's there, everything flows really nicely and as long as I don't get a call for a blood toilet in the middle of the night, then, you know, it's pretty easy to run. But um, but, you know, we're just, it's just time for us to to move on. So it was a thought and that's why I approached Pat. Um, we're, we will replace the board no matter what, just because it's time. But if we could, you know, work with local county post to maybe be something that the community just hopes to be able to do that.
And Tia also said she wouldn't abandon this.
Absolutely.
Go through.
Yeah. The day to day calls anymore as much, which I don't even mind now. I mean, we have fantastic people in the Manor and um, and the paperwork isn't terrible anyways, but I will, I will not leave. It would be impossible to run this without some, someone with some history there. And I did write the original grant for the building, um, and then also, you know, the other stuff that's gone along. And so I would not, completely not abandon. I would even stay on the board if you guys want me to as an at-large member or something. Um, just, just not the one, like, when you dial the four five four zero zero two four phone, your kids forward to myself. That's the world I would be in right now, so.
You know, I don't know where we want to go with this, but I thought I should get it out. I mean, um, if I thought if we included all the entities that are working on housing, it really makes a nicer board. And it does try and detect something in the county somehow, but we have to figure that out in a minute.
So how about this as next steps? Um, I think we would want to just double check with legal counsel about what it looks like if there's a public, if the board is heavily represented by public entities, um, if that somehow changes the status of the board. Because they may tell us actually the majority needs to still be public.
Which you could.
Uh, or private entities. Um, because I'm, I'm curious where it trips into like a one ninety versus a nonprofit. Um, but it might be helpful, Tia, if you have the bylaws and the original organizing documents. We have them. Okay. So I think maybe next steps is just to follow up with our legal counsel and get some advice on board makeup and if it's possible for public entities, i- i- if there are any restrictions that we need to be aware of in terms of public versus private citizens. Um, but I, I mean, this isn't important to me. It's an important uh organization in the community. The facility itself, it's only, if nothing else, we need to make sure that we have board members on it to keep the facility up and running. Um, but it might also be a good opportunity, I think, to at least have a vehicle to use for some of the other things that we've been talking about. So.
And what you have is the bylaws that were amended in two thousand and sixteen, so they're the most current ones. And the amendment happens um, when, when we decided to do the garbage event because it originally was very centered on senior housing in our original.
That's how your five oh one C three was written too.
Yeah. And so then we amended all of it when we wanted to take on this additional project and so, and that happened to us.
So I think maybe a little bit more research and then assuming that the, our legal counsel says, yeah, this.
Well, we have to reach out to the cities and the county with their involvement and what you want to be.
Yeah.
I mean, we've been looking for a vehicle to do this, so it might work out just great.
I don't have a super strict timeline and, you know, it's just, we've been kind of floating the idea for a while, but when Nancy's sold her property, then all of a sudden I was like, ah. I gotta get on this a little bit. Um, I know she, and she won't abandon either by any means. She'll do whatever she can to do to make sure. It's important to us to make sure, you know, stays on it as well.
Yeah.
So she will resign and we both.
Any questions or feedback on this piece from the public? Okay, we're gonna do some legal checks and then I think reschedule it at a future meeting to talk more.
Probably need to look at having another work session of everybody sometime soon.
Uh, Jeff and I were talking August. During our last.
Wow, it's gonna be hard to do for like sixty days anyway.
Yeah, that was why we were looking at pushing out to then.
Okay, I think that's all we need on that one. We need to be continued on that one. Okay, let's move into eight point six, discussion on Mossman Order and Request from Marion County. We have our DA with us.
Hi.
Kara, come educate us on what the heck the Mossman Order is and why we need to care about it. Yeah, if you, if you don't mind. And then the camera can pick you up too.
Hey, guys. So uh Mossman is a federal order out of federal court that was based on problems that are ongoing with the Oregon State Hospital. So I know the most immediate question was, how's that gonna affect us? Right now, we're okay. So just, I'll get that off the table. We're fine for right now. But there is a United States Supreme Court case called Dusky, which is the case that sets the standards for aid and assist. If a person is so mentally ill that they are not able to aid and assist in their own defense, we cannot try them until they are able to aid and assist. But where we were getting hung up is Dusky also says that you can't basically incarcerate a person longer than you would have otherwise been able to in order to make them able to aid and assist. So what we were running into was especially on misdemeanors, people were staying in jail, waiting to go to the state hospital to get their evaluations to see if they were competent to aid in their own um defense. And then they were being sent back with a report that says, no, they're not able to aid in their own defense. And then there would need to be another order sending them back to the state hospital in order to make them competent. And that whole process was exceeding the maximum length of time that we could incarcerate people. And so that was a problem. The other problem is, is you can't use up the max and then be like, oh, hey, you've just done your year. Bye bye. That's also not fair to people who are mentally ill because they're doing significantly more time trying to get them able to aid and assist than than people who absolutely were purposefully committing crimes and just not caring. So the state hospital doesn't have enough people. They don't have enough room. They're way, way behind. They started by saying, we're gonna prioritize, obviously, violent felonies are the priority. Violent felonies are always gonna be the priority. Um, they were trying to take violent misdemeanors too. Um, I don't know if you guys know this, but things like strangulation is an A misdemeanor in the state of Oregon, except if there's certain circumstances that elevate it. And strangulation is actually um, our biggest precursor to death and domestic violence cases. So if I see strangulation in a domestic violence case, that to me is more concerning than seeing somebody who's who's got a black eye and a fat lip as far as um, as a predictor of future violence, future lethal violence against people. But I can't send somebody to the state hospital who's mentally ill and is choking people out to find out whether or not they really are mentally ill or are they just pretending to be mentally ill to get away with it, which means if there's an actual real question of mental illness, we have to release them into the community and try community restoration with community resources. That's where we're at. And that's where the Mossman Order puts us. There was a couple of problems. One that nobody in this judicial district has contributed to at all. Um, I'm pretty confident on that. But one was people were getting these Mossman releases and judges were signing the orders to have people released under Mossman while the people were still at the state hospital in Salem. So the DA from Salem was like, could you quit releasing your mentally ill, violent people into my community? If an order for release gets signed while the person is in Salem, the court has no authority and the state hospital has no authority to hold the people and they will be released immediately. So that's really just on me and the judges to make sure that we have a transport order to get the person back at Norcore before those release agreements are signed. And we, we haven't had a problem with that. No, I don't think any of the DAs have inadvertently had someone released. And that's not something we want to do anyway, because if, if it's somebody from our community, they're gonna be working their way back here and decompensating and getting worse if they have to try and find their way back from Salem. So we're pretty, we're pretty careful about that. The other problem is, um, they're now not taking people on things that don't look like violent felonies. Um, if, you know, you really have to finagle them, they're gonna try community restoration first. We do have one case going right now. The person is on warrant status. So the case is not active until he gets arrested on the warrant that we tried to put into mental health court. Um, we're looking at him as having significant mental health issues and because his lead charge is a burglary, which is technically a property crime and not a violent crime, even though there was some violence involved. Um, that, that's where we're gonna see the problems. That's where we're gonna see a hole. Um, I have talked to Community Counseling Solutions. They actually have money in their grant funds where we can do really quick aid and assist assessments. So we can kind of go around the the process for, for sending someone to the state, state hospital to get an assessment for aid and assist, where I'm just still concerned is when, when restoration is required, whether or not we have the resources in our community to really fulfill those. Um, especially now that Community Counseling Solutions has so much of a presence in Yumitala County.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure. It's just my impression. I could be wrong. We haven't really had to utilize it a whole lot, but it, it feels like it's harder to maybe see those resources out here sometimes. That's where we're at. That's what it is.
And so what is, because I've heard Commissioner Bethel out of Marion County talk about this. She's been very vocal at AOC meetings. Can you speak to a little bit, like, what is Marion County doing? And is there something that we need to be doing to weigh in?
Well, they, no, um, there were three DAs. I know there was the Marion County DA, the Washington County DA, and I want to say maybe the Clackamas County DA, all filed their own brief for reconsideration of the Mossman Order. So it was done through litigation that was headed by district attorneys that actually it might have been Patty Perlo from, anyway. Through the two or three DAs did their own, they filed an amicus brief and did kind of intervened in the case. And they've been leading the litigation on the issue about how it impacts the, the DAs. But that order stood. So that, that was just recently heard last month, I believe. And the order is standing as it is for now. So then the action that we've been talking about in the District Attorneys Association is, is really just making sure that our judges are educated. We're small enough, it is so easy for me to, on a case by case basis, make sure that those orders don't get signed while they're still at the state hospital. We don't have anyone at the state hospital right now. So I just personally can make sure that part doesn't happen for, for Marion County, like. And that's essentially what I think everybody in this judicial district has been doing. But it's not a lobbying thing because it is a judicial decision. So we can't really lobby for it other than you know, recommending that all those pops that have been put out there for the state hospital to get more funding, that those pass in the short, short term and the long term. Um, if the AOC is talking about what can we do, I think we really need to look at our infrastructure for mental health. And then you really see it on this side of the state. I feel like you really see it in Yumitala County. There used to be a state hospital there. They shut They shut down the state hospital and the idea was to have all these other different um, smaller facilities that were less restrictive and more therapeutic take their place. They've been having trouble staffing those. Some of them have funding but can't stay open because they can't be, you know, staffed. Lifeways was a mess, which is why Community Counseling Solutions has to stretch themselves to go out there. I personally had three homicides that I feel Lifeways had done their job. Those homicides wouldn't have happened when I was a defense attorney out there. So we really don't have the infrastructure in place and that's something that needs to be more strategically addressed. If you would like to see a good example of what some people are trying to do that would lessen the burden on the state hospital, I would look at the work Sheriff McGill has been doing in the Dawls for the Resolution Center. And I would strongly suggest that we try and get ourselves in a position where we can join using the services of the Resolution Center when it opens. We are not involved in that right now. I was involved in it when I was still in the Dawls. It is supposed to be a crisis center for people. Lots of times if we can take those people who are in crisis and get that four, five days, get people stabilized on their meds, get that crisis mental health intervention, we can circumvent having to use the criminal legal system altogether. So any of you that would, I, I would just strongly suggest looking at what Lane's doing over there. It's a really great idea. He's been hugely instrumental in it. And I think he's, it's covering Sherman, Wasco and Head River Counties right now. Um, I think it would be great if we could get ourselves on that too. For our, we wouldn't be much of a burden on them, but it's such a burden on our communities when we have a person that needs that kind of help.
You think we, we really don't have a problem. We've only taken one case.
We have more of a problem than you think, actually, you know, and, and I was really disappointed. I did my first um, Extreme Risk Protection Or- Act Order, which is the red flag law for guns. I, I'm, I'm a pretty, I'm a very strong constitutionalist, so I strongly believe in Second Amendment rights. So I was very hesitant to use it, but we had a case where my deputies, you know, knew this person to be armed, knew her to be making threats about shooting people and had a long history of mental illness and making threats about hurting people. And I looked and I saw multiple arrests for domestic violence that for some reason just kept getting dropped. So no conviction that I could use, but I mean, this, this, this is exactly what the statutes were supposed to be for. And you know, your domestic violence is supposed to keep you from being able to have firearms. That's just the law right now. And so I see somebody who was arrested, I think, five times for domestic violence. And we were going in to arrest her for domestic violence. So she wouldn't be able to have firearms anyway once we had the domestic violence case going. But nobody wanted, everybody was looking for a peaceable way to do it. We called up Community um, Counseling Solutions to have a mental health worker come out because we wanted to approach it therapeutically and not blow stuff up. And I remember I could hear Brittany on the phone with the counselor and she was like, well, what do you want me to tell her? I mean, that's, that's why we have you, because we want you to go in and talk to her and be the mental health worker before we come in with all the, you know, guns and bulletproof vests. Um, so there's a lot of work to be done, but we were able to get someone to come in, which I felt very good about. And we've just had a couple few situations that never escalated, but we do have the mentally ill and when in the substance, you know, the substance use affected crowd too, you know, you get a little bit of mental illness, little bit of substance use, mix them together. Um, so we've definitely had some volatile situations. Um, and we have people that come through. So we had a person that was going the wrong way on the on-ramp or off-ramp, you know, in Arlington. And it turned out he was in the middle of a manic episode, bipolar, ended up in an inpatient treatment facility. So uh, we see a fair more, fair amount for the population we have. Um, but yeah, I don't, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be on watch when one of, one goes sideways by any means. And I will tell you, the person we have on warrant status, um, so I had a case in Wasco County where the family refused to help with prosecution because the defendant was mentally ill and they were like, he needs mental health help, not jail. But I can't get him mental health help if I don't have a criminal case against him. So the case kind of started falling apart. Family refused to cooperate. He ended up taking a deal for something relatively minor because he was still in jail. He gets out. He gets out. He goes back to his mom's house, who was the victim in the case. I had to kind of let go for less than I wanted to. And he ended up murdering her best friend and stabbing her. The woman he murdered is the mother of my victim for the person who's out on warrants and is mentally ill here. And the, and, and the, the girl whose mother was murdered is also our guy's victim and pregnant. Pregnant, hit, well, at the time she was pregnant, his victim, and she's telling me the same damn thing. He needs mental health help, not jail. But with the Mossman Order, I can't send him to the state hospital, at least not initially. And I don't, without a criminal case, I don't have any method to get him mental health help. So this girl, her mother was killed by a man in the same position as her boyfriend is to her right now. And that terrifies me. So um, right now, we're good. But yeah, that, that's, that's the thing that keeps me up at night is, is literally that one case.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. But those are the things I'd recommend you looking at. AOC talking about infrastructure for mental health and pops for the state hospital and then talk to Lane and look at the Resolution Center and the Dawls.
Questions for Kara.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for being here, Kara.
That was a long, oh yeah, it was a long, long trip. My secretary had to remind me not to start cussing.
Um, all right, eight point seven is discussion on the home, on homelessness issues in Gillum County.
Um, so, well, we'll just both stand here because I feel really want me to sit down. Um, so I wanted to talk a little bit about uh, my uh, a woman that I had come through Arlington and um, I saw her um, downtown. She had her car. It was supposed, she had no place to go. Um, there, I didn't, we didn't have anybody to help her at that time. Um, Carrie Cowan from the Help Fund had COVID. So she couldn't meet with her either. Um, so I ended up meeting with her and then putting her um, in the motel for six days. I was working with CAPCO um, to try and get her housing and um, and not just maybe send her to a shelter because I knew that she would be um, good for their promise program that they have in Pendleton, a good um, client for that. And so I ended up spending twenty-one and a half hours with her that week and spending about five hundred and seventy-four dollars out of my grant funds, which I, which I was able to do because she had been a previous victim of a crime. Um, so that fit, but in a lot of cases, it's not going to. And I'm, it seems like we're running into this a lot and there's a gap and uh, seems to be a gap with our county. Um, because I know that we use CAPCO for shelters and homeless um, uh, and houseless issues. But there has to be someone get them, to get them there. So someone has, had to take her, to drive her there. Um, and I had to go to Hermiston, then Hermiston didn't have someone. Um, she was upset and left there. If I wasn't there to continue the service and to continue the process, we would have never helped that person. And I think in our county that we have, um, you know, we're financially stable. And I think that um, we owe that to the citizens of our county to be able to help people that do come through because we don't want to have a houseless and homeless issue in our community. And so I don't know how the county wants to move forward with that, but it almost seems like we have got to have someone on board that's there all the time that can help with those things. And it's, it's, it doesn't happen all the time. It's not every day. It's not every, every week, but um, some of the, I, I was glad that I got to go through the process so that I understand how CAPCO works. And they were out of money. So it was a good thing that I was there to help her because otherwise she would have been um, just another person that was houseless some, you know, and, and um, and the program that we were able to get her into is very beneficial to her. And I think that's gonna really work, work for her um, for the time being. And um, so she can stay in the promise program for ninety days, but not everyone can. And you can get kicked out, he's pretty easily. And um, with the program, when you sign up for this promise program and they do an intake on you, which you have to be there in person to do the intake. They can't just do it over the phone. Um, it can be a week or two or three before they ever get in. So they're still houseless in the meantime. So um, we, they were actually able to get, they had eight beds come available because they were remodeling and so um, some, some apartments or a motel, actually. And so we were able to get her in um, within three days, or they were. But CAPCO was out of money. It's the end of the year. So they don't have any money to put anybody in a hotel. They don't have any money to do any of that. So that's where we have to kind of take care of our own people, you know, that are coming through. Um, I know you kind of wanted to bring up the.
Why this concerns me.
Why this concerns.
One, I can't always let the county use twenty-one hours of my victim's advocate's time um, to take care of a problem. So I really just need to know when a problem like this comes up, particularly if it's one that we can't bill out our expenses to our grant because we can't validate that the person qualifies for grant services. Who, 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 who do we send them to? I, I, I have no idea. I honestly have no idea. So that's one thing that concerned me. Um, the, she definitely, we, we did have the time and availability when this happened. But two, um, we're seeing some criminal or criminal adjacent type activity from people that are getting stranded in our county. Um, so definitely seeing some people who are deliberately coming here to commit thefts on their way through, thinking they won't get caught because we're rural. But I'm also seeing one that's big enough that it's attracted the attention of the DOJ. And I've been getting phone calls and emails from the DOJ and the state police about it. Um, it was a trucker who broke down in Arlington last year. And the trucker had no money, had no money to get the truck that was fixed out of, you know, paid for the fixes, was stranded in Arlington. And apparently um, Gary, Gary Wagner, right? Wagner? Gary Wagner actually got him a hotel room for a couple nights and helped him um, get ahold of his friends. So his friends could lend him money. So he, and then helped him get a U-Haul so he could run a U-Haul, take his load to Portland, get paid for it and bring it back. In the meantime, we're having an entire racial bias DOJ investigation into not just our tow truck driver, but also our, our sheriff's department because they're, they're accusing us of um, having bias, ha- basically, I don't know, being a good old boy network where we're trying to protect somebody that we have a contract with. I, I had explained to Salem, like, we, we don't have a choice of who to have a contract with. This isn't like, you know, you gave the contract to your buddy. It's literally the only person. I, I don't think this guy in Salem realized how few people there are in this county. Um, and he also definitely had a distorted report of events for what happened versus what really happened. But here's the problem. We don't have resources to take care of people who get stuck in town. Those people sometimes are going to commit crimes. And even if they're, and to me, well, I don't wanna, that's an ongoing investigation, so I'll just leave it where it's at. But we, we also have people that are going to start making accusations against people who failed to help them and sometimes very publicly. So the individual who's involved that, that was stranded here for a while, even though he received help from community members where they paid for hotel rooms out of, you know, their own pockets, he's threatening to call TV stations. He's definitely already called the DOJ and gotten the DOJ's attention enough that I'm hearing about it. Um, we don't need the crime. We don't need the publicity of us being a place that's basically sundowning the homeless, especially since a lot of the homeless tend to be marginalized members of the community that can utilize their status as a marginalized member of the community to look like the reason we're not helping them is because of their status instead of we're just small and have absolutely no resources. Um, I mean, domestic violence victim, minorities, you know, the, people who get stranded are getting stranded because they have a lack of resources and predominantly people of lack of resources have at least one identifying factor that could be used to make us look really bad. So just would, would like some idea of where those resources are in our county and, and where we're gonna channel them. So this is the person we call when we have this situation.
And, and do we have a, like a memorandum of understanding or something with CAPCO that says that they're going to cover us? Or they just receive grant monies that say that they're gonna cover us?
They just receive grant monies.
Okay.
So what I would say it sounds like is I think we do have the resources in place, but it sounds like we need to coordinate them a little bit better. So what I would say is if somebody is in crisis, um, like that homeless, um, even if they're not necessarily stranded but local, um, that that first call within the county apparatus should be Sabrina, because she's the family and services, uh, senior services coordinator. Depending on which community it is, we are already funding both organizations, both the help and the Condon um, Food Pantry to provide that emergency assistance. So we specifically send money to help to be able to pay for lodging for people, to get them up the road if they need to um, access services at like Hermiston or Pendleton or the Dawls. So those are already happening, but it doesn't sound like that connection happened with this particular.
Well.
Individual.
You can get them on the road and you, you can, you can give them a hotel room, but, but the people that we're seeing, they're not gonna, they're gonna come back to our community because we gave them a hotel room. But if we can move them on, the gap is someone there to move them on and to help them complete the paperwork, to get them into, you know, to basically hold someone's hand to get that done. Otherwise, we're gonna keep them back. She was in Arlington the week before and used the Help Funds.
Yeah, so I'm thinking, like, realistically, it is probably, in, in terms of the county, the person who's really assigned that right now is Sabrina. So.
So just a minute, so to make sure I understand. So our, our housing programs for emergency short-term housing that is not, you know, crisis housing in a hotel room, but like the thirty-day, ninety-day while you're looking for and to housing assistance to get into, then transition to apartments is CAPCO?
I believe so. Yeah, the county doesn't currently fund a program that does that.
Right. What, we don't have housing. We just heard that.
Yeah.
So, okay, so yeah, that's where the gap is. The ve- the big, biggest gap for us that we're seeing that's gonna be problematic is okay, fine, we might be able to get somebody to call Sabrina, get them into a hotel. If it's like, I just need, you know, emergency funds to get the gas pump on my car fixed so I can get to my home where I have people. But as far as, as getting them into our temporary longer-term housing, we go to CAPCO. That's the gap is getting them to CAPCO because CAPCO refuses to come here, even though they're getting money to serve us. They're not coming here and they're required, and they're not willing to do video or phone applications. They're requiring the people to be there. So that's the problem, is that they're getting money to serve our area, but they need our people to be there. Yeah.
So I would say that it sounds like maybe it's a discussion between Sabrina as the family, uh, senior and family services coordinator, director, and then also public transportation. So the physically getting them there, we have an entire fleet of vehicles and paid drivers. Um, so it's really just getting all of those resources lined up, like they're there. It just sounds like that's what I kind of started with, is it? I think we have all the pieces. It just sounds like there's maybe not, there hasn't been a maybe sit down between transportation, senior and family services and maybe help because they realistically, more likely to happen in Arlington.
This is what you do where you pick up the phone, how you get this to happen.
Exactly. And also on the help side. Exactly, and also on the help side, if. Carrie, because I know Carrie is really the linchpin up there, if she is for some reason not available. Sort of who's the backup on the help?
Yeah, that would have helped a lot.
Um, cause I think, you know, I mean, I think we have all of the components, it just sounds like maybe maybe like a. Coordination meeting needs to happen about like, okay, so that folks know like who the initial call needs to go to. And what that should, the chain of events that needs to trigger once, say, Sabrina's notified that there's an individual. What's that?
Is the help field tied to the food pantry?
In Arlington, yeah, yeah.
So they got three people on the board or whatever.
Well, I would also, I I would also say just whenever you guys talk to anybody about having an organizational meeting. Um whenever anyone is saying like that they are running from like domestic violence or criminal activity, that is absolutely when. We do wanna be involved, I mean, we we don't mind ever being involved, but. Just don't always have the resources ourselves, depending on what's going on that particular week, but people who are running for domestic violence. In particular or abuse, we've got grant funds that we can use. And maybe even other programs that we could tap them into that they qualify for, other than, you know. Um like Haven funds and stuff like that, so there's other. Resources that we might have that Capco doesn't for people that are in those particular circumstances.
Yeah, but the hardest part is that we just don't have any place to keep people and and. So we have to or or to move them, help them to move on, because she would, I mean, obviously this person was very. Easy to help, I mean, not that, but you know, pretty easy to help as far as there wasn't drug addiction, there wasn't these other things, it was just trying to. She was not from here, even that, even the Pacific Northwest, she wasn't from here, so um. We had to get her some somewhere and get her some help, so.
So it sounds like maybe. Leah, these are mostly your departments.
You know, and they appointed me the Capcor board in December.
I was still waiting from Capco to confirm that.
Capco did come visit me the first very first time in twenty-one years, so they they came to visit me. And I was really, I was really glad they did, and they they the two people that have that came to my office were extremely helpful. And I think they're really wanting to help now, so I'm feeling I'm feeling good about it, it's right time to get in there now, but um. And they did say, and this was during the winter time, so they had funds that they could give to our county. But it had to be, you know, thirty degrees or colder, and there had to be, there was all these stipulations to gain that money. And they were asking me, can we just do a memorandum of understanding, we'll just pay you back, you just take care of it and we'll pay you back. And I'm thinking, well, I guess we could do that, but we already, we have helped the help fund. So it wasn't like we really needed them and to add another job in there for us. But I was kind of wondering if you did a memo memorandum of understanding. And you actually, where the shelter is with Gillum County, they, you know, maybe charged Gillum County for those funds, because. That's what their whole thing was, they were telling me when I got to Portland, we don't have any money left for the year, we can't really help. So she had to come back to Gillum County, because she had no place else to go. Until they called her and said, okay, we have a home for you now. So that's kind of the problem.
So the Capco board, she's been asked to go on there, but has to wait for their approval, is that?
So. I got people for you to call.
Yeah, so we, this is my understanding from when uh Commissioner Wilkins was on the board, was that we get to. Nominate who we'd like from Gillum County, but the Capcor board ultimately gets to decide whether they want to accept our nomination. So we has been nominated, but then the Capco board can decide. Hmm, we're gonna take somebody from Wheeler County instead, like they don't have to have a Gillum County rep on the board. So they have to elect to take our nomination.
See, I feel like there's a problem here, like they're happy to take state funds to cover our county. But they just act like we don't even exist, so I think that's an issue, and maybe a memorandum of understanding. In order for them to get the state funds, you know, here you you have to have our memorandum of understanding. I mean, it just seems that seems like bullshit.
I know, being, that's all right, it is bullshit, so, but the with the. If um, I mean, when I do grant funds, if I have I have to have a contract or I have to have, you know. Other places have to have a memorandum of understanding for me to be able to gain um to get money for our. To represent our county, so I'm not really sure why they don't have to.
So is most of that, can you speak to a little bit, is the, cause there's the issue of the funding, which is. I think not necessarily an issue, doesn't have to be an issue for Gillum County, because. We can put money into help and we can put money into the senior family services department in order to be able to to help cover. Hotel rooms or shelters, but is. I guess my, the other piece of that is, is there actually a place for people to go, like are there rooms or beds? Or like, and where are those Capco facilities or who's running the facilities?
So the her, the shelter in Hermiston has forty-five beds, and they told me that there's usually about fifteen. Uh used every night, so I'm thinking, okay, well, there's someplace for somebody to go. That this is the feeling I got when I got to Pendleton to Capco, after I've been to Hermiston and. The person that possibly could have helped us wasn't there, we had been told to go to Hermiston, so. They weren't there, the person that I was helping was so upset, they could not physically go on, right? So there I was to help with this, so we go to Pendleton and we get there, they're able to um help with that. And then when I brought up the shelter and they looked at the person that I was working with and they looked at me and they physically cringed. I'm thinking, okay, well, maybe that's not where so I wanna send someone.
Got it.
Or they don't want to send.
So I I I've worked at Capco for seventeen years, right, as a defense attorney. Um the shelters are are for people who are used to sleeping rough. Not for people who are finding themselves temporarily houseless and who are in that cycle, that that shelter is a little rough. Um but the people in Capco ha- are the ones that do all the programs. In Umatilla County for getting into people into housing, so they do the like the renter education programs for people who've been evicted before. And are having a hard time getting apartments, because they um, you know, nobody wants to rent to them because of their prior evictions. They do um apartment vouchers, housing vouchers that can be used similar to like HUD vouchers. They have help people get HUD vouchers if they qualify for HUD vouchers, they have some housing of their own. And they also have resources to um refer people to other types of housing that might be available. So they're the catch-all group that does all the. Bureaucratic work for getting people into whatever type of housing might be available to them. Um the problem that Umatilla County has and Moro, I think Moro County too, and we have, is that. Like there's not a single place where you can utilize a HUD voucher in that greater Hermiston area, because no place. It's too expensive, there you wouldn't be able to get into any place with a HUD voucher, trying to go into, you know, independent housing. There's no place cheap enough to use HUD vouchers, for instance, there's just very few places here. To use any type of vouchers at all.
We have any place that can use a HUD voucher here.
Well. Probably, man.
Yeah.
I mean, and there's an age, and there's an age.
Income.
But that, but Capco does have like, they have, you know, they're renovating the hotel that is where um. Oh, it's right downtown, yeah, Nixon, it's right where uh Stockman or Stetson's used to be, if you ever read that that sting house. They're renovating that one room by room, um I think they just bought a duplex, I heard. You know, that that they're turning into transition housing, I think, they have all. Which one?
The Nixon, right down from that, I guess, right down from. Kind of across kitty corner from.
All of the developments that Capco's doing is are in Pendleton versus Hermiston, Hermiston is way too expensive. And it's actually spreading over to like Echo and Stanfield too. And the the development prices and the housing prices are too high for for the that kind of low-income housing.
So it sounds like maybe for next steps, I'm wondering if. We maybe need to do a meeting to see if Capco will actually come talk to maybe Sabrina um. Shania, maybe Carrie Cowan, to talk about like. Basically, who's gonna be responsible for what, who's and um. And then also so we make sure that our staff, people who are gonna be helping make referrals, understand like. What's potentially available, who to reach out to Capco if they have an individual that might need help. Um, cause the other thing is, like even, we can physically get them to Pendleton, but if we show up and they're like, eh, we don't really have any places. There's not a unit for anybody available, and I think we need to figure out like, okay, so what does that? Does that look like us having an agreement with Capco where there's a fund that Gillum County funds every year that is just. Available to cover the first month's rents, I mean, maybe it's something as simple as that, I don't, there's not so many people that I think it would be. Impossible to come up with a.
I think it would be easy for them to have a different rule for Gillum County than they do for people that are coming from Umatilla County too. About the in-person application process, it makes sense for them to require that for people that are in county. Because of the amount of people that are like, oh, yeah, 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 I want a place, and then and then, you know. I I've worked with that community for so long, you get high, you don't show up, you're mentally ill. You don't remember where you're at, they don't want to hold beds for people that aren't going to show up, hence the requirement that you show up in person. But when we can promise transportation of the person that in-person application requirement. Doesn't necessarily make as much sense, so if we were to have a memorandum of understanding. That would be things that we could be written into ours that was different than other counties they service.
So, Joe, do you have questions?
Oh, no, you gotta answer, I'm just wondering, so the Capco money comes state?
I think state, probably some federal.
Yeah.
Okay, but it goes directly to Capco.
Right, I just, that's the part that bothers me, you know that they put in their grant proposals that we will service this area. I mean, I would, I would like to see what their grant proposal said they would do for us versus what they actually. Do do for us when we try to utilize them, the one time, the one time, you know? So, that's all, uh because I I've I have I have a sneaking suspicion. That they argued our remoteness and our ruralness. You know, necessitated a disproportionate amount of of money for the population, they'd be, so, yeah. And then they didn't use that disproportionate amount of money to help us out, so that's a little frustrating, so I would love to see what their grant proposal said.
There's sure, well, you know, we're the squeaky wheel, we have one person to be the squeaky wheel there, I think we'll. We'd probably receive more services, cause I mean, they were happy to help once we finally got to the right person and just took a while, so. Hey, I gotta get ready for court.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So does that sound, we uh, like the, do you feel, do you feel comfortable?
Yeah, I I just thought somebody after the first of the year would contact me and.
No, it's not, get with me and I'll give you numbers.
Sure, Sherry's still on the board until they reach their nomination, is what it looks like, so I don't know where they're even at all of that. Yeah.
So is she still getting emails from them or?
Not at their county.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking, like regardless of.
We don't need to talk to um Sherry and say, hey.
Well, and maybe regardless of your status on the board, I still think it's probably worthwhile to see if we can get a meeting and say. Help, like educate us on what your housing programs look like, so that one, our staff knows.
Yeah.
What they have, but then two, like what happens when you run out of money, then, you know, what do you need? Could we maybe have a memorandum of understanding that we're willing to pay for it as long as you guarantee units?
Well, and just like Carrie said, what 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 is the state A you for, to do for us?
Another person you should reach out to is Commissioner Tinnan to Umatilla County, cause she listed up the vice chair of that board of directors.
Oh, we'll be seeing her.
Yeah, I have um Alyssa Alexander, who sent out the agenda from Capco. That Sherry forwarded it to, because we were wondering about transitioning it to me originally. Um I shared it wanna be on that board anymore, and so, do you want me to just email her and CC you?
Yeah.
Yeah, just ask what the status is.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause they have, Gillum and Wheeler does not have a representative listed for the board of directors, but Moro County has one, and Umatilla County has four.
And Moro County only has one?
Yeah.
Wow, yes, so pretty disproportionate. How many? Board members, I wonder, are they allowed?
I don't know, that doesn't, that isn't listed there on the website.
Most of them have like a. Minimum and a maximum.
So, okay, we'll make some connections, but I think the next, it, I mean, I it I feel like we have all the components, I think they're just not coordinated. So maybe we try to coordinate first and then see where the gaps are, if there still are some.
Yeah.
Um, okay. To be continued on that one, um let's go into eight point eight, which is consider approval of Gillum County Transportation. The official purchase, Shania is under the weather for a thing, and so Delaney, do you wanna watch this?
This one through, so um during the May third meeting, um we approved the purchase of two vehicles for the transportation department. Unfortunately, due to the high demand and limited availability of that particular type of vehicle. They were only able to purchase the ADA Toyota Sienna, and they were not able to purchase any of the other vehicles. Um she has, Shania continued to reach out to dealerships to try to locate a Toyota Sienna. Um again, we, two of the dealerships to reach out to weren't able to provide quotes at all, because they don't have any Siennas allocated to them. Um one Rogers Toyota of Hermiston just reached out to her to let her know that they were allocated one Toyota Sienna that is still being made. It is on the production line, um and they sent over the quote for that vehicle. Um, these vehicles uh will be, she's still going to be on the hunt, because she's still in need of another vehicle. Um so these vehicles are purchased with funds from an ODOT grant for vehicle replacements. Um and so they are hoping to locate another Toyota Sienna to come back to the board at a later date with. Um so this will, they will not be purchasing the other vehicles in the previous. Uh that were previously provided, of course, this would just be anyone to approve.
And that was the one that we approved for like forty-six thousand.
So how do we undo that?
It's just, cause they were just so, I mean.
They fell through, they are, they're, yeah, she, those quotes expire.
I'm just thinking from the county court.
Yeah, those.
Expective was already proven, the funds are your back.
They, yeah, so I think we would just make make sure it's noted in the minutes for today. Like maybe go back and reference the day when we approved them, and just note that that those vehicles had already been sold by the time. Um Shania went back to them, and so. They're basically null and void, um. And then I think she also told me yesterday that she's trying to get this spent before the thirtieth. Um before the fiscal year turns over, so hopefully she'd be able to.
Well, it sounds like you better get the commitment made before you lose this one.
Yeah, and that, yeah, this one, yeah, this one, I mean, it's still being made, she's not even sure when it will be delivered necessarily, but this is the. Boat that they're in for getting the Toyota Siennas, which are the best vehicles that they've come to find for that transportation department. They're all wheel-drive minivans, they're a little more spacious, um they just fit the transportation department's needs better than some of the other vehicles.
So this motion is in your department, which I'd be happy to settle.
I moved to approve the purchase of the twenty twenty-three Toyota Sienna from Rogers Toyota. In the amount of fifty thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-two cents.
Well, sorry.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the purchase of the twenty twenty-three Toyota Sienna from Rogers Toyota in the amount of fifty thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars. And ninety-two cents, is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
I, I, in your post, motion carries, okay. And we pulled eight point nine, so nine point zero is announced in the next meeting, um. Um, we are actually going to be canceling the June twenty-first meeting. Um, I am going to be at the beach with my, with my two-year-old. Um, hence the long agenda today. Um, so our next meeting is actually gonna be July fifth unless something that needs to be passed by the fiscal year comes up in between, in which case we will just call a special meeting to handle that one piece of business if there is something. But we feel pretty confident. I think that we've got everything we need to before the end of the fiscal year. And Pat, what do you got going on?
Well, is there anything on the enterprise zone that is gonna affect us? I mean, just getting through the other entities.
No, yeah, we just have to get the other entities and then I, I've been finalizing the application and we'll submit that. So really, the only approval that we need is the resolutions from us and the other entities.
So assuming all goes smoothly uh, tonight and tomorrow.
That is just finalizing the application and getting that submitted. We have the maps done, um, which were attached to the resolution. So yeah, that's just where we're at there. It's just getting that application finished.
So we just needed the two cities and then the four.
Yeah, yeah. And I am going to attend all of those meetings over the next two days for help.
She's super excited.
We appreciate.
Uh, what do you got going on, Pat?
Um, uh, there hasn't been a whole lot going on. I've been recovering from my back surgery. You're kind of under the radar a little, but um, did, did have Norcore since the last meeting in Port Orange and um, yeah, my kids see me at four o'clock today. My kid exactly one meeting and Norcore will be next month or next week and or maybe the week after. They never let me know cause they don't send the agenda after the day before me. But um, yeah, oh, a lot of AFC stuff going on in the next few days, but I don't know what the point is.
Yep.
You're trying to go into sales?
I am not. I.
I mean, I don't, I don't know what good it does to do anything at this point.
I'm mostly planning on listening into the ledge meeting to see if AOC staff have heard anything about how if there's gonna be any resolution.
Yeah, I was on the call yesterday with the Eastern Oregon Congress call yesterday and with Ben Lane Owens and um, a few of the other representatives that were, um, all of handsome, but it's just really ugly right now. And I don't think, so until twenty-fifth, once the budget steps through, that'll be that. And then they'll have to try to figure out how to, I mean, there's some priority stuff. I don't understand where what's gonna happen. Some of this stuff is kind of important.
Anyway, I know. I hope some of the stuff gets attached to the Christmas tree at the end that we care about and.
I mean, even on, on like, um, what would that, um, language that needs to be cleaned up and cleaned up in the um, broadband part be in ways of major that out on its own?
I would have to look and see what the referrals were. I'm assuming.
Package and there's some of that stuff we're moving around in committee, but it's hard to trap them, see them going on. There's not a lot of even information going back to the Senator's representatives and what's going on to the last minute. They can't pass that on.
My understanding is that the ways and means uh, chair, chairs are writing the budget bills. Business as usual. And that Senator Canoe has indicated that they will pass the budgets and certain bills that have bi- bipartisan. And so my hope is the broadband one.
And it should have.
Will have enough support on both sides that they do it. That is all assuming that the Democrats don't just call the session and reconvene, which they can, call it early. Um, and reconvene later in the summer to see if they can get an agreement. But the trouble with that is all of the bills are gonna have to start from the beginning once they sign E D I. So, um, so that's why I'm gonna tune in on Monday to see if AOC staff have any clue what they think is gonna happen over the next two weeks. Um, anything else you got?
On the one thing that we should throw this in the mountains, but um, your understanding of that SIFT agreement or SIPS, um, quote charts you sent me? When that goes to the taxing districts, do they get to weigh in or do they get to make a decision in order to accept?
I believe it is just a way in, very similar to what we just have or like the red zone and the enterprise zones. They have an opportunity to weigh in, but there is no acceptance process. And I don't, I think it was the same on the other ones.
Well, that's the way it was the red zone, I know. But and I assume to be the same with the SIF agreement.
Yeah, that's what my understanding was based on the quick little.
Talk to him about the difference in them engaging a copy of the quote charts.
Yeah. The difference I think is that if it's within like a city, like if it was within the city of Condon or something like that, like the city and the county would be working together to negotiate it versus where it's the enterprise zone or stuff like that. It's really kind of the, the county would be the one taking the head on them.
Yeah. Which is why all of the CIPs up to this point have just been the or because they've been in unincorporated areas. But if it was one to happen within a uh, city limits, then it would have to be both entities.
Yeah. Sorry.
All right, Leah, what do you got going on?
So I have been going to help district special meetings and work sessions. And then Monday, they had the Budget Committee followed by another special meeting. So they're forging ahead. Um, they've had lots of people volunteering and helping them. And I think the clinic is up and going well. So and then I met with Ben Lean and we looked at some of the new programs that are gonna appear on the radar, which I kind of gave Nathan a heads up that we'll probably be looking at supplemental, you know, sometime in the next year when. So there was at least two new programs. They, one, they kind of had an idea what the funding was. The other one had absolutely no idea. So. And then the only, the other thing I wanted to bring up was the eye-opening revelation of Creek County when we were at when we were at County College and we were, had the dinner session and the two commissioners that have been elected at uh, Creek County were talking about that whole thing, which I think our county has been which it sounded like there was a lot of counties that had went home and went, uh, we need to look into this. But um, so for the Padweek, um, Creek County got uh, cyber attacked.
They fell victim to a ransomware attack that um, shut down their county operations. Um, they went down on the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth of April. And when we were at our meeting at mid-May, they were still not up and running.
Yes.
And they're having to rebuild a lot of their stuff from scratch. So we are working with our IT contractor, Radcomp, to help give us a better start in the event that we fall victim to phishing, ransomware, malware, any of those things, um, to help make it so our operations are not shut down for weeks.
Yeah.
And hopefully not have to start our systems completely from scratch.
Well, and Creek County was right in the process of like maybe upping their insurance and trying to figure out whether or not they could afford it and everything when this happened. So I think if it, even if it costs us some money to get ahead of it so that we don't fall victim to it because.
Yeah. Radcomp has been really proactive. I've had a meeting with them and they've already started to help us get some policies implemented to help reduce our risk. Um, and then there's definitely more to come, including some uh, upgrades to our network and our servers and things like that. So definitely will be a process, but I think it's worth it at the long run too. Cause it is um, a when it happens and not an if it happens reality at this point.
And the education of the staff and everybody on, you know, not opening things that.
Yep. Jolie sent out a great training this month for our staff um, regarding phishing attacks and how to kind of recognize them. Radcomp also has some additional training that we are going to look at adding in um, to our stuff that we can gain access to that they have created.
They were, they even talked about down there how they'll just like drop one of those thumb drives in a hall in a courthouse. And somebody will pick it up and go plug it in and.
That is not how Curry County fell victim though.
There's what's true email, wasn't it? And they thought that the email worm had went in like a month before they actually it went in and was busy doing this behind the scenes before it actually
took over the system.
Yes.
So much fun.
Carrie, I, I was this, I think you could have probably at certain points sort of been dropping that room. Cause people were like, oh, yeah. You always think.
No, not me.
The other guy, yeah.
Yeah. And I will say, um, I mean, one of the things that Curry County did that is, I think, gonna be helpful is that this is not the first Oregon county that's come under attack. I think it's Tillman County and others have also.
I think.
Um, but this is the first one that has not paid the ransom. And um, I think that what it's buying us is it allows all of the counties to send their IT staff, which is, our intention is to send Radcomp to go look at and learn from what happened in Curry County so that then they can look at our system and identify exactly where the, the largest vulnerabilities are. Um, so we'll basically be able to see how they gained access and get a better sense of um, safeguards. Then under previous attacks where they just paid the ransom, everything got switched back on. And then there was not really enough of a investigation into how, um, so.
Because they talked about uh, it was Dallas, Texas.
Who hacked, who was able to gain access to Curry County um, in the same timeframe, um, shut down the city of Dallas, Texas and several others. So realistically, we can see that it is they're going after whoever they can gain access to regardless of size or budget or anything like that. So Curry County can get hit in the same time from the same group as the city of Dallas, Texas. It can most definitely happen to Gillum County at some point in time on some level.
Yeah, and they brought in, they got the FBI, Homeland Security.
And then they even have tech companies, like Microsoft has actually sent people down there to study it. So Microsoft can look at how they confirm up what they, their programs and systems. So I really think it will, it's a devastating act to have happen to a, a county, but I think there will be some good that comes from it with being able to study that particular event.
So for the public, when you're wondering why we're investing in cybersecurity and upgrades the computer system.
Yeah.
This is like a, a very vivid example of what would happen if none of the county government functioned.
Because they, they can't do recordings. They uh,
All their.
They were right in the middle of the budget stuff. I mean, it was, it just.
Yeah. What a mess. Um, okay. So for me, let me just see. Um, the summer work experience program, OIC program, the internship program are going like gangbusters. Um, Amy's got all of the applicants in. Um, all of the kiddos are placed. They're gonna be doing a um, a sort of employee one-on-one training next week and then they'll be able to start the following week. Um, so um, so far uh, seems to be going pretty smoothly. Of course, there's always gonna be things that we learn and decide we're gonna revamp next year. But kudos to Amy and Tiffany. Um, Amy's new assistant for kind of really taking that over on short notice and getting things turned around and kids engaged and excited. So those are all moving.
Very good where we've been.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So, so some years in the past, we wouldn't have kids placed until mid uh, July. So they're all gonna be placed um, prior to July fourth this year.
Do they get to stay in that program longer because you place them earlier or is it just a limited?
We have a set amount for each of the kids. And actually, what we find, found honestly is like a lot of the kids have, some of them are gonna play summer sports. They may be going on family vacations. And so we basically just, yeah. Yeah. And, and for most of them, um, they'll probably, you know, start running low in early August-ish. But a lot of parents tell us it, that's actually kind of a good thing if their kids are involved in the fair and other things, cause they want them to kind of start. And then sports starts back up again too. So they start having other things taking up their time late in the summer.
Better earlier than a little bit later.
It, it actually does, I think. Um, so that is going well. Um, wanted to note that I finished up my service on the um, Rules Advisory Committee for Certified Childcare Centers last week. Um, the very good news is that they are going to be significantly changing some of the teacher licensure requirements. It's gonna be, um, technically, those rules would not go into effect until January one. But I asked their early learning division staff if it would be possible for our center, we only have one in um, Gillum County, which is the Condon one, that would fall under this rule set. If they are able to apply for an, um, an exception prior to January one, uh, and they said they are working on a process to be able to do that. So hopefully that will help alleviate some of the staffing. Um, it won't completely solve it, but hopefully help with Janie and trying to get especially the the preschool room back up and running um, later in the summer and um, making sure that we have sufficient staff to run um, to everything. So that is, uh, that was a good process, I think, for us to participate in. Um, the Frontiers Talonet uh, board met on Monday and wrapped up its budget. Um, and is working on Cottonwood Tower moving forward. Um, I think they're gonna be starting to pour concrete for the big slab next week. And then I think actually standing up the Cottonwood Tower after ten years of trying to get this project going the following week. Um, so that one is finally going. Um, thank goodness. Um, let me see what else. Oh, yeah. So Delaney and I have been meeting with uh, X4 to map out the Rocket two point O process. Um, right now, it's looking like there's gonna be two stakeholder meetings. One is gonna be on diving deeper into the um, pathways, the early educator pathways that we previewed on the PowerPoint that I gave. I wanna go back into it and get firmer commitments from our partners on what everybody else besides Gillum County is gonna be doing. Um, so that it's a more cohesive plan. Um, and then the other uh, a separate stakeholder group is also gonna be um, tasked with figuring out how do we engage employers in the problem. So whether that's um, looking like, we really kind of talked about it as a menu that we might develop. So an employer who's interested in becoming sort of more um, family friendly, like could look at policy, they might look at sponsoring a uh, slot at one of our centers. They might look at other uh, benefits packages that help support families who are.
Somebody that stayed at my house said that they need to get ahold of you.
Yes. Yes. So, um.
Actually, believe it or not, you just emailed a little bit ago. You were talking.
So those are gonna be the two things that we're um, pushing for now. And then um, I'm gonna still be developing out plans for our facilities. Probably long-term funding. How do we figure out a sustainable, long-term funding source for them? Um, so um, those are all still um, moving forward for the roadmap. Um, next week, next Tuesday, the nine-one-one board is gonna be meeting to wrap up its budget. Part of that conversation, which you guys might be interested in listening into, is Jefferson County continues to ask if their user fee can go down year over year.
Oh, wow.
And so it'll be an interesting conversation uh, to talk to them about why they need to
Go up.
Pay their fair share. And so that'll be on Tuesday. If anybody's interested, it'll be at the ESD conference room down there, but there's also a Zoom link if you're at home and just wanna.
Um, will you send me that?
What time that Tuesday?
It's at one, is it at one?
One thirty.
One, one. Um, hang on, I'm gonna send it. Okay. And other than that, the only other two things I wanted to kind of preview for you. Need to go back and look at the, the application dates, but um, Oregon Community Foundation has a grant out to expand to create new or expand existing programs. And I'm kind of kicking around the idea of taking our OIC Early Educators Program and seeing about applying for this community foundation grant to see about extending that into the school year. So if we get kids that are really interested, complete the summer work stuff and then say, I wanna do my work experience there, or I wanna be able to work Fridays at the center. Like whether we might be able to expand that program into the school year and maybe couple it with the student success dollars that. And maybe couple it with the student success dollars that our high schools get where they're supposed to be. Doing some career development with kids. So there might be an opportunity to kind of pair some dollars with what the school districts have. And kind of align with some of the strategic plans that our uh district boards have for. Doing more intentional career development for students. Um, so I'll probably, I need to double check on the grant application, but probably on um during our July meeting, I'll come back with a. Proposal for us to maybe take a look at. Um, the other one that I am interested in, when we were talking about workforce, the workforce pa- uh. Uh, pipeline pathway for early educators. The X four team came back and said, hey, you know, just an observation, but this seems to be really heavily geared toward. Sort of growing your own from student, you know, like middle school up through high school. What about somebody who's like mid-career or. Already graduated from college, but maybe now wants to get into this as a field. And how would, like, how would they engage with their path? Have you thought about that? So Delaney and I were struggling with like, what could we do? And happened to have an email come across our desk about. The possibility of applying for a planning grant to see if we could do an AmeriCorps program. Which would basically be people sign up to be a fellow. Um, you have a sponsoring agency which would either be us or some other community organization. And then um for. A lot of, a lot of times it ends up being college grads, like in their early twenties who wanted to teach for America or something like that. Um, but but basically they take on a fellowship, they're placed in a community for a year-ish. And then they um they receive leader leadership training, on-the-job training, all of that kind of stuff. They get paid um but a s-. But a small amount, I mean, and in exchange, they get student loans forgiven through the federal government. Um, and so I wanna look into that one as well, but I might be saying like, hey, maybe we wanna look at doing a planning grant. To see if we could do that. We could bring in an outside consultant who's set up AmeriCorps programs before. Um, but it might be worthwhile a way to engage sort of people who are mid-career. Or already gone, really gone, I mean, they're not in high school anymore, they've already completed. Like, how do we get them to engage? And if there's loan forgiveness attached to it, we may get people who wouldn't otherwise look at Condon or Arlington that could suddenly. Like, that's really the incentive is, hey, I serve this for a year and I get a significant amount of my college loan uh forgiven. So I um, right now, they're not looking for the grants for the actual AmeriCorps program, they're just doing planning grants, so. Um, I think that opens later, later this month and then closes in late June or late July. So I'll probably bring something back. On that as well for us to maybe consider. Um, cause I think it could be a really cool um mind for other people to look at. Um, anything else that we have?
Well, on grants, I do have something that I got an email or some email yesterday, looked at and it was twelve million granted by. Oregon Department of Energy Fortin Crepe Grant, did you see anything on that? And it showed everybody that got funding, which we were supposedly through Allen County, Massacre, and I spent a million dollars each. Sherman County got seventy seven thousand five hundred dollars of the million they asked for and we got zero. And the most of them went to bigger entities and governments and Salem, the state police and. Just, so I, I guess my, and then also Miranda applied for the Oregon DOT E V grant, which. She did a really good job on that. Which is just, I don't remember here. So um. Anytime we could message our friends in Salem that we're not getting treated fairly, if they really wanna do. Any type of decarbonization in Eastern Oregon, I better start doing something instead of just looking the other way.
Well, and that's kind of like, so Saturday. Um, County College was the day we had the USDA person there talking about all the. Grants through the USDA. And they gave handed everybody out uh little sheets on how much was spent in our county, which. They didn't have one for us, but she sent it to me later and there's three. Three grants and they're less than, you know, they're. Out of millions and millions.
Yeah, we tried to do something with E V through USDA and especially for down in Arlington and the answer was, first thing you have to do. Is prove you.
Made it.
Don't have the money. The second thing you have to do is go to a letting institution and be declined before you can even apply. Well, why would you even consider putting any A and B if you gotta jump to those kind of? So I was gonna be saying, that's why do you consider doing and why are you worried about it if they're not gonna help to get there?
Yeah, luckily talking to O dot originally, they said that our project seems very hopeful because of our location is the lack of maybe. And the travel through other.
The rural side, you weren't interested in Arlington, it's much.
Yeah. But yeah, but how is the funding with O dot gonna be down the road when?
No, this is.
Pretty soon, isn't it?
Okay.
Um, one more piece related to potential funding and the Early Learning Center expansion. One. Believe Jeff is in the Early Learning Center are gonna be at the Planning City Planning Commission next week, two weeks from now. Um, so hopefully they get the sign off on that project and can actually finalize, start going chasing money, basically. But I also am hopeful, assuming things do not totally implode in Salem and they can't pass bills. My understanding is there is an earmark for the Early Learning Center expansion planning to come through. That is the latest that I heard from Smith's office is that the governor that was pitched specifically on that project and is supportive. So assuming they pass budget bills.
Well, I think they'll pass the budget bills because. Republicans and I listened to something a bit on the twenty bit.
Got it, okay. So fingers crossed it stays in there. Um, but right now it's, uh, it looks good that we may have uh close to half of the project already funded um already, so. Where to come on that? Um, anything else for the good of the order?
Uh, I just put an update on broadband. Um, I attended a broadband meeting hosted by Business Wargen in the Dals on Monday evening. Um, it was, it was informative. Uh, there is a lot of structural components that I didn't realize that were happening with the way that the funding will be divided and priority areas. And who's able to apply for the funding and all of that stuff. Um, so I am going to take a a deep dive into those things based off what I learned at that meeting. And start re- getting reinvigorated, but there is a five-year plan that is being developed. There, Oregon is doing its own broadband map. And um, there's a lot that needs to be still figured out. That is. Still being figured out even at the state level for how the funding will be divided. There's talk of priority areas getting funding while those priority areas include. Low-income families, minorities, individuals over sixty and rural. So realistically, everywhere, the entire state, the entire state, well, but that means the entire state of Oregon.
Yeah.
Could be defined as a priority area because they all have.
Everyone but because we go and.
One thing I have to say, I think it looked like the kickstone worked stuff out.
Yes, they took out um satellite internet and a lot of the um. Like mobile, your five G stuff like that um is being successfully challenged to move out because it's not actually reliable and providing speeds. Um, cause one thing to note with broadband, broadband is, the definition of broadband is the speed that you are being provided. Not the mayor you're being provided to. So right now, the the, it is twenty-five up. And three down. And they are, the standard is going to be a hundred up and twenty down.
Oh.
Is what they, is what they are hoping to have that new standard be. That will be the definition of what broadband is moving forward. Um, it was a great meeting. It was, there were some tribes representatives there. A lot of internet service providers were there. Um, as well as uh Wasco County. Um, cause a lot, all people who will be able to be eligible in the pool for to receive funding, but there was talk of. What do we do after um maintaining those things? Um, cause a lot of the places who receive it are rural. And how do they justify the cost of getting into those areas? Um, there's also talk of state coordination. With how some of these projects, it might be easier to reach a Washington or Oregon city by going from a place in Oregon to a place in Washington. Or vice versa, or like in Idaho for our places along the border. Um, Carrie Pivenage was there from McAd and she. Um, is the head of their broadband efforts and she brought up some really great points, especially because McAd is a cross-state agency. Um, so that was. Definitely, it was definitely a good meeting. I'm glad it, it came across my radar uh early Friday morning. So I'm glad I was able to see it and be able to attend, because I think it'll be, and they're going to host more of them. So I'm gonna continue to stay engaged in those to help us figure out where we need to go with our broadband project.
So it sounds like first step is making sure that as they're developing these plans. That any definitions about who gets priority, that we are paying attention and weighing in um to try to position. What we know we're gonna need. Um, but the other thing I was surprised that Delaney told me was how long they're anticipating before. Funding is actually gonna be released, because it's.
Twenty twenty-five. So they're developing plans, so there's plans, there's challenges, and then there's the final plan and then funding.
So we still have. Time.
We still have time to get our ducks in a row.
So not that we don't care about housing, but we have some time to work on childcare and and our our fiber. We have some time to work on housing and. Childcare in the meantime, because it's gonna be a while since, before the funds are actually ready for distribution. Um, last thing is just to note for the public record, I think everybody. We're all aware of this, but we have officially hired a finance director. Um, so Rachel Boyer, who grew up in Condon, um, many will probably. Know of her dad um for uh uh long time residents and.
Had a few rough experiences with him on the football field.
I bet. So she is um coming, coming home. Um, and so we are in the process of helping her find housing, but. Uh, right now, tentatively are planning for her to officially join the team on July tenth. That's her first day and so she'll spend. Several days with Miranda, getting all the paperwork and trainings and all of the things and then spending, we already have her on uh Nathan's schedule and on Ellen's schedule. To start activating to our financial systems. Um, so we'll officially welcome her, probably um our second meeting in July. His one shall be physically present in the building, um but just wanted to let folks know that we have a, I think, outstanding candidate. Um, so.
I agree.
Really excited for her to join the team. Um, anything else for the good of the order? If not, it is twelve forty-three and let's adjourn the meeting.